Call to order, the February sixth, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting of the school board of the school district of Haverford Township. Would everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, I'll ask my colleagues to read the district mission and district goals.
The mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
The district goals include social emotional wellness, to produce a community of empathetic and resilient learners with skills to socially and emotionally flourish, to prepare contemporary citizens to modernize and expand learning experiences to prepare students as critical thinkers, problem solvers, innovators, designers, with a complex global society. Diversity and inclusion, establish a culturally diverse and inclusive educational experience that develops social-cultural proficiency.
Thank you. I'll ask Mr. Testa to call the role, please.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Dr. McKay?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Dr. Shelton?
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Here.
Ms. Vitale?
Ms. Wedeman?
Here.
Dr. Larson?
Here.
Dr. King.
Okay, Dr. King is out tonight for a personal matter, and Ms. Vitale had a scheduling conflict. Okay, moving on to our official minutes from the January twenty-third, twenty twenty five, regular board meeting. I'll accept a motion to approve those official minutes.
Shelton moved.
Okay, second.
Motion passes. Minutes are approved. I did not ask for a vote, a vote, thank you, or a vote, okay. Okay, so we have a motion, and all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for that. Okay, moving on now to section two of our agenda, to our student reports. We have our Haverford Middle School Student Representative, CJ Lynch.
Hello, everybody. Thanks for inviting me. My name is Christopher Lynch. I'm a seventh grader at Haverford Middle School. I'm excited to share some updates about what's happening at the middle school. As we celebrate Black History Month, our school is recognizing the achievements, resilience, and contributions of African Americans. While this month is dedicated to the reflection and learning, we are committed to fostering inclusion and appreciation for Black history and culture, culture, all around, all year long, sorry. We have some exciting events coming up as well. Our middle school themed concert is scheduled for Thursday at the Haverford High School School at seven P M. We are looking forward to an amazing performance. The Haverford High School Singing Valentines will be visiting our school on Wednesday, bringing some fun and music to our hallways. Winter athletics are going strong, and our students, athletes, are working hard as they wrap up their seasons. Our theater program will present Beauty and the Beast for February sixth through eighth. Our cast crew have put in a lot of effort, effort, and we're excited for our community to see the show. On February, I mean, on Friday, February seventh, eighth grade will take part in Career Day, exploring different professions and career paths. Sixth and seventh grade will participate in Wellness Day, focusing on health and well-being. It allows our red-out day. It's also our red-out day, red-out day, sorry, and we'll have an early dismissal at eleven twenty A M. The seventh grade dance is coming up on Friday, February twenty first, and we're all looking forward to a great time. There's no school on Monday, February seventh, in honor of President's Day, and no school for students on Tuesday, February eighth, as our teachers will be involved in a professional development. That's all for my update. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity to share what's happening at Haverford Middle School. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, CJ. Next, we have our high school representative, Austin McConnell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm delighted to be here tonight to share the latest updates, achievements, and upcoming events from Haverford High School. Our community continues to thrive with academic excellence, artistic expression, and athletic prowess. Just to recap, those events, those dates are February seventeenth and February eighteenth, for those days off, yeah. In the realm of academics, in the realm of academics, this past Monday, the twenty-seventh, marked the beginning of the second semester for students. With this new wave of classes, students often feel refreshed and excited for school due to the changes of pace in education, community engagement, and classroom populations. Tomorrow, during fourth block, we'll be hosting our annual Wing Bowl, featuring students and teachers alike, who will compete to see who can eat the most wings in a set time period. The format is a student round across ten minutes, then a teacher round across ten minutes, and then a final round of the highest totals across three to five minutes. In the realm of art and music, our high school hosted our annual Bands and Jazz Winter Concert last night at seven P M. in the auditorium. Our talented musicians showcased their skills in a diverse program that allowed for enjoyment across all age groups. Our forty-second Annual Evening of Jazz is scheduled for March fourth at seven P M. This event will feature performances by the Haverford Middle School and High School Jazz Ensembles, the High School Jazz Combo, and our twenty twenty-five Jazz Artists in Residence. It is most definitely an evening not to be missed. Onto athletics, our winter sports team are demonstrating exceptional dedication and skill as they round off the end of their seasons and move into playoffs. To start off, indoor track continues to run all over Pennsylvania and Delaware County this season. Just this past weekend, Haverford sent twenty athletes across eleven different events to U Penn to compete in the Penn Relays Winter Showcase. The track team looks forward to racing in five more different meets throughout the month of February, as they prepare for the Pennsylvania Track and Field Coaches Association State Championship on March second at Penn State University. The girls' basketball team finished their dominant season on Tuesday of this week. The girls' team finished with an impressive record of seventeen at four, with at one time holding a seven-game win streak, including their senior night on this impressive run. The boys' basketball team is also closing out their season with a game tomorrow night against Actora High School. I've, good luck to them, and they currently hold a record of nine and twelve. Swimming and diving, both the boys' and girls' teams have shown remarkable performances this season. The boys' teams are currently ranked second with a record of six and one, with the girls' teams being ranked fifth with a record of four and three. The boys' team has also shaved and dyed their hair yellow to show some extra school spirit as they prepare for the upcoming district and state meets. Wrestling is still in first place in the Central League. Impressively, they beat Harrington this past Wednesday, sorry, the past, past Wednesday, with a score of sixty-eight to four, which may be a Haverford margin of victory record for wrestling. More recently, Haverford dominated the Haverford Boys' School last night in their senior night with a score of forty-seven to twenty-seven, and the team will travel to Strathhaven this weekend to compete in the duels tournament at nine A M. on Saturday. Bachi were big winners in their senior night this past week against Marple, and continuously they have one team advancing to the Delco Championships, hosted at HHS on February nineteenth at two thirty P M. Our competitive spirit team, the Haverford Lady Fords, just competed this past weekend in the P I double A, three A State Championship, finishing second overall for the large varsity event. Continuously, they departed yesterday and are currently at the Walt Disney Resort in Florida, where they will be competing in the twenty twenty-five National High School Cheerleading Championship tomorrow at seven forty-five and nine P M. The event will be livestreamed on varsity.com under the National High School Cheerleading Championship heading. Good luck to them. Lastly, the boys' varsity ice hockey team has maintained a strong presence atop the Central League. They currently sit with an impressive nine-and-two record, following their senior night triumph over Harrington with a score of thirteen and three, and will begin their playoffs in the upcoming weeks. Spring sports are continuing to get underway, with our spring sports informational meeting being hosted on February twentieth, with trials for spring sports also being scheduled for late February and early March. Continuously, for any family looking to participate in spring sports, the Family ID Portal just opened this past Monday, so make sure you register. Our second semester's Back to School Night was held this past Monday on February third, and this event provided parents and guardians with insights into the second semester's curriculum and expectations. It offers a valuable opportunity for parents to really meet and get to know our teachers at Haverford. Scheduled for February twenty-fifth, from six to seven P M., we will have our Junior College Planning Night in the HHS Auditorium. The session will offer juniors and their families guidance on the college application process, including information on the Common App, Naviance, and securing letters of recommendation as they transition into their senior year. Next Thursday, we will have our annual Singing Valentines event, where student choral members will go around the high school, giving many performances dedicated to any Valentines amongst our students and faculty. As we continue through this semester, I encourage everyone to participate in these events and support our students' endeavors. Haverford High School thrives because of the collective efforts of our dedicated staff, talented students, and supportive community. Thank you for your unwavering commitment to excellence, and together we make Haverford a place of pride and achievement. And to round off my speech, our school has spearheaded a special, secret initiative run by Principal Donaghy that I am overjoyed to share with you tonight. This initiative involves the replaying of the Eagles Fight Song around three times a day, in hopes of giving them extra luck for their Super Bowl game this weekend. Thank you, and go Birds!
Thank you, Austin, and thank you again, CJ. Okay, I'm gonna hand it over now, section three of our agenda, to Dr. Ruchi for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Larson. It's always refreshing to hear from our students about the many exciting happenings that you have opportunities to be involved in at both our middle and our high school. And an additional highlight of our meetings, when we have an opportunity to recognize students in our district and staff for their accomplishments. And this evening, we are going to recognize three of our athletes who have attained the status of All-State Team Members. And in addition, we are extremely proud to recognize our football coach, who has achieved the recognition of Pennsylvania Football Coach of the Year. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. DeSina, for some introductions.
First, can we please give it up for Austin McConnell? Make sure, if you, make sure to join us in the spring. Austin is a phenomenal volleyball player, and from his recap, can probably be the A D himself. Also, girls' basketball, about six minutes ago, just won the first round of the Central League playoffs, so give it up for girls' basketball, thank you. Well, I brought props tonight. This is my Central League Championship hat, so it's a football thing, so. What an unbelievable week to celebrate football, Eagles and Fords. So tonight, we're here to celebrate the Central League Championship Football Team and the individuals from that team who received All-State accolades. The three players and coach in this room are the leaders responsible for pioneering one of the most significant redemption stories in Haverford Athletics' history. This has been confirmed through tedious research in our yearbook archives and independent historians. The group turned a one-and-nine season in twenty twenty-three with zero Central League wins to a historic eight-and-one Central League season, the first home playoff win in school history, multiple Haverford records, P I double A District One records, a final season eleven-and-two record, and they brought back the Thanksgiving Ranieri Trophy. A lot of people in the community were stunned at this year's record, but the student athletes present today, the coach, myself, were not surprised in the slightest. I had the luxury of seeing them plan and prepare on paper, in the weight room, in the field, on the field every day since November twenty-eighth of last season, working hard in their free time to guarantee the results that we're celebrating tonight. They've also already begun lifting for next season as well. More importantly, this team cheers on the marching band after every game. They volunteer to organize meals for the needy families around the holidays. They are contributors in their classroom. They are A P Honor All students. They are kind. They are from wonderful Havertown families, sons of teachers and coaches and parent volunteers. Tonight's celebration is just as much a celebration of when a community of people rally around to support a group of student athletes and coaches. Tonight, we honor four individuals who were leaders of the community on and off the field, and who were acknowledged as members of the P A Football News Six A All-State Football Team. I will introduce them individually along with their accolades. So guys, when I call your name, just come up, and Dr. Ruchi will hand you your certificate. Our first student athlete, Alex Clay, come on up, Alex. Alex is a team captain, first-team Central, All-Central League, anchor of an offensive line that rushed for a school record, and second-team All-State. Alex Clay. Our next student athlete, Jake Lasicki, come on up, Jake. Jake is first-team All-Central League, had fifteen sacks, which is, he is the leader in Six A in the state this year, and the most in Haverford Football History. Jake is first-team All-Pennsylvania. Our next student athlete, Liam Taylor. Liam is first-team All-Central League. He is the Central League M V P. He is the Delco Football Player of the Year. He rushed for a county record of three thousand and six yards, and a school record of thirty-five touchdowns. Liam is the all-time rusher in every category for Haverford High School as a junior. Liam is first-team All-State. Finally, Coach Luke Dockerty. Coach Luke Dockerty, in his fourth year, Coach Dockerty pioneered, pioneered an eleven-and-two Central League Coach Championship team. This season, Coach Dockerty was honored as the Six A P A Football News Coaches Select Coach of the Year. To be honored by your peers in the Coaches Select category for a coach is a very big deal, and a true testament to the kind of recognition he deserves. More importantly, Coach Dockerty spends just as much time with the kids carrying the water than he does with the kids carrying the ball. He is the Haverford School District definition of a warm demander, holding high expectations for his students and athletes, and providing unwavering support. He's a stable, constant, and a safe person for many of the students at Haverford High School, whether they are a football player or not. He is a cheerleader and supporter of every kid in the building, and that's why, for us, he deserves Coach of the Year. Congratulations, Coach Dockerty, Alex, Jake, and Liam. Go Fords! Sure, yeah, it's okay, no. Thank you. Congrats, guys. Congrats, guys.
The next item on our agenda is a summary of a presentation that was provided to our Curriculum and Pupil Services Committee of the Board, highlighting the work of a group that we have taking a look at artificial intelligence and its implications for teaching and learning in our classrooms. So I'll invite Mr. Rob Anderson, our Director of Technology, and Meredith Hearn to come to the podium and share that information with this group.
Good evening. Thanks for having us back tonight to give our update on the AI Working Group that we presented before. I'm Rob Anderson, I'm the Director of Technology, and as Dr. Ruchi mentioned, with me is Meredith Hearn, our Technology Integration Coordinator. So we're gonna go over a few things with, with you guys tonight. We'll talk through kind of the Working Group and how we formed it, the work that the Working Group's been undertaking, some training that we've started to deliver, some information for students, and then at the end, I'll give a little update on the progress of the Instructional Technology Plan. We were lucky when we put out feelers for people that were interested in joining our Working Group, that we got thirty volunteers that were interested in working with us on kind of shaping how Haverford would apply AI across the district. We tried to, to make sure it was a diverse group between teachers, administrators, and some support staff. Jack, who videoed, works at our board meetings many nights, was also part of our, our Working Group there. So the Working Group was kind of just looking at, again, how we wanted to look at, how we wanted to use AI within the district moving forward. So, kind of first steps were to start joining some other groups. So, again, most school districts are in a similar position that we are, where they're just kind of exploring AI and trying to figure out how it fits in with everything else. So, the D C I U runs an administrators' AI network that we attend meetings once a month with them, where they have presenters from, that are experts in the field of AI, that share information, and we get to kind of interact with other districts around Delaware County. The same day, Ms. Hearn takes some students to a student forum that they hold in the morning, that's students from a number of districts that kind of, again, very similarly share ideas and thoughts and, and get some presentations on how AI can benefit them. We're also part of the C C I U as an AI leadership group that we've been part of for a little over, I guess, almost a year now, between Delaware County and Chester County Schools. Again, just sharing, mostly that's sharing information about progress of how people are implementing AI within their districts. And then, D V C E has some presentations that we've attended as well, that focus on kind of applications for AI within education. There was another, Ms. Sax and I were lucky to also go to another presentation that was hosted over at Marple. Mr. A J Giuliani, there's an agreement later on tonight for having him come in and speak. That was where we got to see him speak, and he, again, gave a lot of the pluses and minuses of AI, and it was a really great presentation that we think would be valuable for our staff. And with that, I'll let, turn it over to Ms. Hearn for a little while.
Thank you. Hi, so I want to talk to you a little bit about what our Working Group has been doing so far, starting in the fall and continuing really up until very recently, before I turn it back over to Rob to talk about what we're gonna continue to do throughout the spring. So, the AI Working Group began to meet early in the fall, and the first thing we wanted to do was we knew we wanted to take an intentional approach to unveiling AI in Haverford. So we decided the first step was to come up with a mission statement to kind of guide all future work with AI. So this is the mission statement we came up with. You can see here how we've talked about leveraging this emerging technology for our students and staff. We wanted to align all of our AI goals with our pillars of academic, technical, and social-emotional learning, in order to provide our students personalized and student-centered learning experiences. Our aim here is really to kind of modernize education while remaining grounded in those values that are so important to the Haverford community. As we were talking about this mission and crafting the mission statement, we kept coming back to these three back to these three kind of ideals that we decided to create as our core beliefs about AI. And the first one is really kind of the most important, and that is just that AI will enhance but not replace human-centered education. The teacher will always be the heart of the classroom, and we will never have AI replacing that in any way. Our educators and their knowledge and expertise and relationships with those students are invaluable, and it's really the foundation to all classroom learning that's happening. The second core belief was that knowing that AI is constantly evolving and changing, that we would be in a continuous cycle of feedback and auditing in order to address these changes. We want to make sure that the AI tools and programs that we're using are aligned with our educational goals and values as that changes with new tools that we decide to implement. And our third core belief is that we want to use AI to foster responsible, ethical, digital citizens. We are preparing our students for a world and careers that do not exist yet, so it is so important that we teach them how to critically use and evaluate AI and the output. This includes discussions on the ethics of AI, AI bias, and the environmental impact of AI. And so we're going to make sure we address those directly with student-centered lessons. Once we had our mission and core beliefs, we created a training program for all faculty and staff, we're calling AI 101. As of this week, Monday, all seven schools, the faculties, have had their AI 101 training. What we talk about in AI 101 is what is artificial intelligence? What can it do? What is it not? What are its limitations? And then we go into these district guardrails, kind of those safety nets to protect us from false outputs of AI or hallucinations. Bless you. The ethical concerns and biases inherent in AI. And so we do that by using something called the Human in the Loop Framework. And this basically says that there will be human oversight in all aspects of AI, and I kind of broke that out into different sections for teachers so they could see exactly where that human oversight should be, everything from the input, what they're putting into it, monitoring the output for those ethical concerns or biases, modifying the output so that it's meeting their specific student needs, their content, and then kind of that feedback loop, again, of going through it with revisions. So we wanted to make sure that there was human oversight in all areas of AI usage. We also talked about not, that Haverford will not be using any AI plagiarism detectors. At this point, there is no tool that is 100% effective in identifying AI use. Right now, many of them are reporting up to 4% false positive rate, and a lot of those false positives are coming from multilingual students and neurodivergent students because their manner of speaking and writing is sometimes misidentified as being computer-generated. So until we have a tool that we can guarantee is 100% effective and that will not falsely identify certain populations of our students, we will not be endorsing one to use in Haverford. We also go over these mission and beliefs that I've just shared with you, and then we wrap up AI 101, talking about our student AI usage levels, which I'm going to share in just a second. We will continue to work with our faculty and staff with specific flex trainings throughout the spring and summer. These flex trainings may be on generative AI, specific tools like Magic School and Diffit, and different ways they can use AI in the classroom. So one of the most recent things our Working Group has done is come up with a student AI usage level framework that we're calling the Traffic Light Protocol. So we have a red, a yellow, and green. This is optional for teachers to use, but when they prepare an assignment and post it on Canvas or on Google, they have the option to direct what level of AI usage is acceptable. So they can start with red if they're not comfortable with AI, or if this is just an assignment where they truly need to measure a student's understanding of the material, they can just say no AI usage at all. If they want to allow some usage of AI, they could badge it as a yellow level assignment. What this means is that the AI can assist in the process, but not the product. There can be no content created by the AI, but an AI tool could help a student brainstorm some ideas, create an outline, come up with a working timeline for them, kind of act as an assistant throughout the process. If a teacher chooses to go with the green level, that means the AI can direct some of the content creation, but not all of it, because ultimately it should be the students' work. When the yellow or the green level is used, teachers will give clear and specific directions on what is allowed and what isn't on the assignment, and then students will have to include a disclosure statement stating specifically how AI was used, what tool they used, and in what parts of the assignment, so that there's some transparency there between the student and the teacher and the AI usage. And so moving forward, Rob's going to talk about more about what we're going to continue to do into the spring.
Thank you. So as we mentioned, we were members of a number of groups, so a lot of those groups were providing guidance about kind of best practices in implementing AI. So we took that and we developed kind of a timeline for Haverford for the school year of how we were going to kind of address some of those things. So we started with, as Meredith said, started with why, like why we wanted to use AI in the district and those kinds of things. We then moved into what, which is where we started developing some of that content and the trainings and things like, and things like that. We're currently in that how state where we're providing those trainings and starting to figure out how teachers feel comfortable with it. We're starting to move into developing some student trainings, as Meredith mentioned, to kind of address some concerns and give some benefits and pitfalls to the students, everything from the ethical to the biases to the benefits and the environmental concerns and kind of all of those things wrapped into some small lessons that'll be easily digestible by them, so that when they do start using it as a student with those usage levels we just talked about, they kind of have a baseline understanding similar to what we've given our teachers. Kind of our next step that we haven't moved into next, but we'll be kind of looking at when we might, as a district, want to start whittling down the number of AI tools. Currently, we're letting teachers and kind of explore and use AI tools as they find them and see them as beneficial, and at some point, similar to how we use some of our curriculum tools, we may start endorsing one or two that are ones that the district's kind of providing most of our training around and kind of encouraging our staff to kind of more focus on using those tools in particular. As I mentioned, since we're here, we'd kind of give like a little bit of an update on the Instructional Tech Plan, since that process has been underway. We have, again, another group. Obviously, there's some crossover between the AI Working Group and the Instructional Tech Plan Group, but they've started meeting, we started meeting prior to winter break and broke into some subcommittees with a couple of focus areas. As you recall, we had the CCIU Instructional Tech Audit in the spring, and as we reviewed that, there was a couple of kind of big areas that we thought needed to be addressed through the development of a plan. They weren't just things we could kind of ad hoc throw out. So those three things were instructional tech tools and software, which is, you know, kind of what our selection process looks like when we're looking at tools, how do we reevaluate whether we're keeping tools, how do we develop professional development around those tools, both initially and ongoing. The other one area that was identified was screen time usage, and we have a group looking at purposeful screen time usage is what we're calling it. It kind of falls in line with the new recommendation from the Pediatric Association of Quality Screen Time or Quantity of Screen Time. So we're kind of, they're working on a plan of how to kind of communicate that out to teachers with some guidelines around that. And then last was digital citizenship and literacy, so that's just looking at all of our students and classes K through 12, just to make sure that the lessons that are being delivered around digital citizenship and the tech skills that they're learning are appropriate for those grade levels, that we're making sure they're getting everything they need at that level, and again, that that continues all the way from K through 12 so that all our students benefit from some digital citizenship, didison? That's a tongue tire, sorry. Digital citizenship and literacy lessons. And then similar to what we've mentioned with the AI Working Group, technology just moves so fast, so there has to be a build-in process to kind of continually evaluate that tech plan. The work that we're doing, is it still meeting the goal we had originally intended? I think I mentioned last time we were here, if we had done a tech plan three years ago, there would have been no mention of generative AI anywhere in it. So we would have definitely had to modify our plan in this third year of that plan. So right up front, we're setting up some metrics about how we're going to kind of evaluate that and get feedback from teachers and students and everyone, just to make sure that what we're providing is still the right thing for Haverford in that year as opposed to just 2025. To give kind of a little bit of an update on the timeline, as I mentioned, we've had committees formed, they've been meeting and working on content, we just had a meeting this past week where those groups started to share out some of the information that they've generated already, some really great stuff that's going to be in this tech plan from that. We have another meeting in a couple of weeks where hopefully they'll have kind of some finished content that we'll then start building into our tech plan. The goal is to have the tech plan document itself completed later this month, and then we'll be back, I believe, March 13th to the People's Services Committee meeting to, along with some of the members of that committee, to present that tech plan to the board and the community. And then after that, we'll start the actual implementation of all of the great planning that's been going on.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Hearn. Are there any questions from the board?
I just would like to note that this presentation was given at the Curriculum Committee meeting, and there was a robust conversation, so it feels a little odd to reiterate all the things I already said to you, but I appreciate that you incorporated some of what we discussed into the conversation tonight, but those comments still stand, so I encourage people to go back and look at that discussion.
I have a question about, are we thinking about implementing AI for the community, like, you know, like a chat, for example, a chatbot that lets them find resources and give some guidance on the aspect of that?
I know I've looked at a few, I know there's some districts that have, and some vendors that are definitely pushing those kinds of products. I don't think anybody's really, you're giving them a lot of information, so I think it's something that's going to take some time for us to really look into and feel comfortable with providing those kinds of tools.
I agree, the emphasis on the educational piece, but just wanted to know. Okay.
I have a couple of questions, and I'll start in reverse order of the presentation. For the tech plan, I appreciate the timeline here and that before implementation, you'll come to the board, and I believe that our programming around like typing and general computer use is all in our middle school. Is that right?
There, so there is, there's the tech ed classes in the middle school where they teach typing, and they do have some other more STEM-focused tech ed classes, yes. There's, but there's also, our high school obviously has some more technical classes as well, and the elementary, many of our libraries have some STEM equipment in there, like robots, and I believe there's still some 3D printing in some of the libraries. And then our counselors deliver some digital citizenship lessons across K through 5 for sure as part of their curriculum that they deliver.
Rob, I'll just jump in and just add that we are, I believe it's second now, starting in second grade, we do typing without tiers, so they do have access till start to learn to type. We wait till second grade because their hands aren't big enough until second or third grade.
Is that new this year?
Yeah, that is, I think we started it last year, but yes, relatively new, relatively new to do that. Librarians do have digital citizenship lessons and media literacy lessons, as well as the school counselors for sort of responsible and cyber safety and that kind of thing.
I'd love to know what like percentage of our students in like fifth grade can actually type, like can type well, because I think it's very low, and I would honestly love that number even for our eighth graders, like how much the classes are actually, like that's a fundamental skill to be able to type very quickly and without looking, and I just worry that some of these like really interesting skills are getting, are overshadowing that, and the different tech ed that's happening. It seems to me like some of those really fundamental skills might be getting pushed to the side, and so like, I'm not expecting an answer tonight, but just, that's a question that I'm thinking about with this tech plan and if that is a consideration at all. So then on to the AI. Are our students currently using AI on their projects? Is that allowed?
I think the correct answer would be that there's not correctly, like the teachers haven't as of yet, I'm sure some teachers have said absolutely not. Most of our students do not have access to the AI tools on our district equipment, but we acknowledge that students can use devices outside of ours to generate some of that content, so I think the safe answer there is while it may not be teacher-directed, there is definitely students using AI.
Yeah. Okay, that's interesting. I just was confused by the presentation with like the stoplight and where it says where we are. It just seems like it is being more implemented than I thought that it would be at this stage, and I'm just saying that because when we implemented this policy and when we discussed this policy, it really felt like the Working Group was going to do a lot of internal working before pushing it out and would come to the board first before that got pushed to the teachers and students. So I'm just surprised, this is obviously really fast-moving, and I feel like even in the last six months, AI has kind of exploded in obviously personal life, work life, et cetera, but I'm just, I feel surprised at how far along it is and that this is the, I know it was presented at the Curriculum Committee two weeks ago, but this is the first time that the board is really hearing that, that all of this is happening.
I would also say my answer about the students would be true last year as well, even before the policy was adopted. We had students that were using AI to generate content, so most of what the Working Group's doing is trying to create the correct environment around using AI within the school and with, while acknowledging that we do have students that even though we haven't said start using AI necessarily, are in fact using AI on assignments, so trying to catch up to them in some ways. But first, we had to get the teachers up to where they were comfortable with it, to be able to deliver the, like what they can and can't do with it.
Okay. So right now, there's nothing specific offered by the district to the students, like a ChatGPT-type function?
I don't believe so. I believe that we still sit in a place where they're blocked on the district devices for them.
Okay, and is that true for staff too?
No. So for staff, we, with the, at the end, towards the end of the summer was when we opened up the AI tools for staff to start kind of exploring and kind of feeling their way around.
Okay, so staff could be using AI within their lesson plans this year? Is that right?
They could, yes. Yes.
Okay, like I said, I'm just surprised. I felt like the discussion that was presented to policy and that we had had was that it was going to be discussed further before it was going to be implemented, and I understand that we can't stop students from using their own devices and that that's happening, and I certainly really appreciate the work of the group, putting, you know, trying to work really hard and put guardrails on something that's already happening and is happening really quickly. I just would say that I would look forward to further updates of the board for when more is implemented.
Okay, and if I could just offer some student input in response to that question. With like AI in the classroom, I found it kind of depends on the subject. For example, if we're in like an English class, obviously you can't really use it to create your typed-out answers, and so Canvas has a plagiarism screener on that that also has an artificial intelligence-like basic screener on it. So if you were to use it to write an essay, for example, it would get screened and the teacher would be notified of that. I know, for example, in our past English class, this last semester, we were given an assignment with The Great Gatsby where we were supposed to make a poster board, and on the poster board were several different paragraphs where we were explaining different thematic events in The Great Gatsby, and our teacher wasn't really worried about the artistic part of it, so she allowed us to use artificial intelligence in that sense to just kind of create a background, and then everything else where it was typing, it was all completely all student-driven. Then if you look in more towards like the math section, for example, I'm with my physics class currently, if Dr. T is unavailable, Dr. Tomaszewski, our physics teacher at the high school, if he's not available, students will often go to artificial intelligence for extra explanations when it comes down not necessarily solving problems, but it can give you like detailed explanations of how a problem might be solved upon really struggling to get past a certain point. So it's, students have access to it on personal applications, obviously, and it can be used, but our teachers do not, will know if it's being used most definitely, especially in the English and literature classes.
Awesome, I appreciate that. Those are my questions, thanks.
I just wanted to add maybe additional comment. I think this field is moving so rapidly, I welcome your efforts, you know, to try to establish a framework, so I look forward to seeing how it matures.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just want to thank you all for coming back. I know you were here a couple of weeks ago for the Curriculum and People's Services Committee, but because the work is moving so quickly, because it is so impactful, because it is setting up some guardrails and framework for the implementation of AI in the district and with our students and staff. Just want to thank you for coming back and allowing the board access to the full presentation and opportunity to comment publicly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Moving on, the next item is a first look at our 2026, 2027 school calendar. Nicole Battistelli will take us through that. Again, this was shared with the Curriculum and People's Services Committee. And Nicole will also incorporate into her discussion this evening some of the feedback that we got from that, from the committee that evening.
I'm not sure everyone can see it, but yes, it's fine. I have it printed out for me. So on the screen, if you can see it, there are two versions of the 2026, 2027 school year calendar. When we start to develop this calendar, there's a lot of things that have to go into, you know, our process. We have one hundred and eighty-three school days built in the calendar so that we have three snow days built in, one hundred and ninety-two teacher days. There's contracts that require twelve paid holidays. We look at the holidays for, if we were here, no one would be here like Thanksgiving. And we look at the elections so that we have in-service days. So there's a lot that kind of goes into getting this calendar together. So I prepared two options for the board. Option A is representative of a calendar that starts after Labor Day. Unfortunately, in 2026, Labor Day is on September seventh. So the first day of school would be September eighth. Because of that, there is a shortened spring break in that calendar. And the last day of school would be June seventeenth. Option B, which is what was recommended to the board at the People's Services and Curriculum Committee meeting, would start before Labor Day on September first. This would allow for a full week of spring break and the last day of school would be June sixteenth. When I presented this, I spoke about holidays that I've been monitoring over the last several years, such as Eid al-Fitr. We have students taking the religious exemption absence days on that holiday. And over the last several years, that number has grown. So as I presented before, in 2019, there were twenty-two students and then the following year, forty-five, sixty-five, eighty-nine, one hundred and eleven. So I was asked to look at what other districts use as metrics. And unfortunately, other districts could not give me metrics that they use to identify when they would take that holiday. I reached out to many districts and not one had metrics. But what I did want to offer as an option is if we did want to look at taking that holiday, I would recommend because staffing is not an issue on that holiday, I looked at both staffing numbers and student absences. Moving the February sixteenth Professional Development Day to March tenth so that schools would be closed, but the professional staff would be here. And that would allow for, you know, schools to be closed, but to not interfere, not to cause any change to the number of student days and staff days. So that is an option that's not reflected on this calendar, but that was after the questions from the last meeting, an option that I thought would probably meet the needs if we were looking to have schools closed that day.
And that is an approach taken by some others?
Yes, so the some of the, most of the other districts that do take that holiday, it is a professional development day in that district. So schools are closed for students, but staff are in.
One question, what would happen? I mean, at this point in time, you haven't heard from any staff member that that is a holiday that they would want to take off. If it gets moved into a teacher development day, does that then mean that they have to attend and they wouldn't be able to take that holiday if if we hire someone who that is an important holiday for them?
No, and it's not that no staff members would take that holiday. It's that we are able to staff our buildings that day without a problem, but that, no, that would not be the case.
Teachers can miss those.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to ask HR how that works, but yes. For religious reasons, yes.
I have a couple of questions. The two options that you're presenting, other than the first day and the last day, the only other difference that I notice are the January high school exam days. Is that right?
No, the option A has a shortened spring break.
Right, okay, the first day, last day is spring break. And then, so then the other than those, it's the high school days?
The high school days and then the parent-teacher conference days at the elementary level in March are different because of the week later start.
Okay, and that's just right because if that's where like the semester falls.
Yes.
So was a calendar tried, did you try and make a calendar where Labor Day started, where we started after Labor Day, but there was still a one week spring break?
I've probably made like seven versions of this calendar, so there are many, many, many different versions of this calendar, so yes. But the way the last day would fall would not, we don't want students coming back on like a Monday or a Tuesday for the last day of school. We try to end it towards the end of the week because we don't want to have students come back for one day. And so that's why these were the two options that we presented.
So I guess the way that I'm looking at it, the one, the calendar that starts after Labor Day, which I think is.
Option B, yep.
Okay. Looking at option B, the last day for students is a Thursday.
It's a Wednesday. The Thursday is a teacher in-service day.
The seventeenth?
Yes. On option B?
Calendar B is the start before Labor Day.
Okay, sorry, I'm looking at the calendar that starts after.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have mine on the wrong side of my.
I don't have the A, the A and B isn't clear on my computer.
Okay.
So looking at the calendar that starts a first day for students on September eighth and a last day for students on Thursday, September seventeenth, right? That's where we are.
That's calendar A.
Okay, regardless of whatever letter it is, can we all just agree we're looking at that calendar?
So Thursday, the seventeenth as the last day for, I'm sorry, my.
That's calendar A.
That's the last student day, right?
Yes.
Thursday, the seventeenth in pink?
Yes, I'm sorry, yep.
Okay, and then if we're looking at keeping this calendar and trying to figure out how to have a full spring break, making the last day for students on the eighteenth would obviously add another day. And then we would have one day left to try and figure out, round out that full spring break. Is that, am I right about that?
Moving the last student day to the eighteenth, so teachers, moving the last teacher day to the twenty-second?
Right. And I guess what what I would look at for reference and what I sent by email to board leadership and to Dr. Ruchi and Ms. Saxa is if you look at our calendar from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we, the first student day was September ninth and the last student day was Friday, June seventeenth. And we were able to have a full spring break for staff and students. And the way that that worked was that the next week, the, again, there was the Juneteenth holiday on the Monday, but Tuesday and Wednesday were were professional development days for staff. And so I guess I'm, it just seems to me, I mean, I, I think that I sent an email. Actually, I have it. I sent an email over a month ago asking to see a third option where we could have something like that. And so I'm just, I'm not really sure why these are the only options that the board is looking at. And again, I'm thinking about this in the context of as long as I've been on the board. I know that it's, the community feels really strongly about starting after Labor Day. And we've done a lot of things like with that twenty-one, twenty-two calendar to help that happen. And I remember that the one year, the only year that I've been here that we started before Labor Day was when Linwood was being constructed. And I remember being up here at the board table and promising the community that this was not going to become a norm and that it was only because of the Linwood construction. And so again, I just I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering why we couldn't have seen a third calendar where this could be just a little bit more creative.
I would say this is not becoming the norm. This is because this is the latest time Labor Day can possibly be in a year. So that's why we made this calendar. And one of the considerations was camps for parents, for students, that the first week of September is going to be a very difficult week for families to find camps that are open. So that was our thinking of option, recommending option B as our calendar.
And I, I think for me, one of the things about option B that makes sense to me is that for me, when I think about the start of the school year, it's not so much the day after Labor Day, it's the first Tuesday of September. And this continues that pattern of being the first Tuesday of September.
And that's why we picked Tuesday and not the first, the Monday in August. We picked Tuesday because it's the first Tuesday in September and we thought that that was the best option for the district.
And I I just know as, I mean, obviously my children are older now, but I know from my own experience finding camps and other kinds of daycare options during the first week of September of school is not happening. I agree with you, they're very hard to find at that time. So it seems to me it's better to be able to follow and start school the first Tuesday of September so that we can get started on the school year rather than add additional days in the middle of June that just extends the school year into the summer. So for me, I'm very comfortable with option B.
I would just like to second that as a sped parent. And so when your child has special needs, you know, it's even harder to find the camps that are open with the accommodations that you need. So if we could be consistent with that second Tuesday in September, the first Tuesday, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
That makes the the most sense for those of us with children who have complex needs.
Seems that this one also provides a bit more flexibility if there are snow days or if there are some, some things that occur. The previous couple of days that that could be kind of.
Well, both have three snow days built in.
Three snow days built in, I'm saying this one. I also agree with the issue with with the camps. Camps are impossible to find, sometimes even even during last week of August. I mean, I know that a lot of states, they actually, they, they, they're starting by late August or even mid-August. So I mean, this is starting the first, the first week of September does feel like when school begins for most people, so. Yeah, and also the issue with with spring break, and a lot of people are very, feel very strongly about having a full, solid week of spring break. I think people need that recharge.
I guess my point is, is I just think that the board could have had the opportunity to look at a third option and see what that would look like. And I hear the the childcare concerns. I've also heard the administration admonish parents for bringing childcare concerns over policies that are made. I mean, I know childcare can can obviously be an issue, but it's, it's, I've heard many times, it's not the responsibility of the district to have childcare. So I guess what I, what I'm saying is that we're doing this, you know, well over a year and a half in advance. I don't think that we're going to hear about it anytime soon. I think that we're going to hear about it next year, next summer, the end of next year. And to give the the community more opportunity to to weigh in on this and and because it is a really big departure from what we've done. I mean, I'm on the board, I look at these calendars and I just realized that we have Monday and Tuesday off after President's Day. It's not something like you can do it three years in advance and say that it's for planning purposes, but people aren't going to realize what's happening unless we plan on actually advertising it. I know a board member at the Curriculum Committee brought up doing some sort of survey about what would be important to the community and that was said that it shouldn't happen. But again, that would be a way that the community would understand that this is a really big departure of what's happening and feel like they had a voice and could be involved in this decision. So I I just, you know, I I hear what what the, what the administration is saying and this was a really difficult calendar year, but I would have just liked to see a little bit more creativity. And speaking of snow days, I know that we're, we have policies for flexible instruction days. And even just taking out that Friday and adding a flexible instruction day would get us those two days of spring break and leaving everything else the same. So I I just, I'm disappointed that that the board couldn't have seen a third option and and had that consideration.
I'll just chime in. So this was first presented in Curriculum Committee. Ms. Snodgrass, I know you sent some emails to board leadership and to Dr. Ruchi about examining a third option. We, we, I think as a board, we have to be careful when individual board members are making requests for an administrative recommendation to be redone. Because then we are potentially overtasking the administration. I mean, we have hired Dr. Ruchi and her team and trust their judgment to come up with these things. This is an opportunity for that feedback. If there is a majority of people at this table who would like to see a third option, I think we can discuss that. But as of this, this moment, I'm not hearing that. I also think that, you know, it's important to remember and I'll defer to Dr. Ruchi, just all that goes into creating a calendar. It's not just when can we take our vacation? How long can our spring break be? It is staff contract hours, it is state required hours for instruction. All the professional development that's required, holidays that need to be accounted for. The list goes on, so I'll stop there.
And I would just like to say, as a sped parent, I absolutely would like it to be known that I am not the only one who looks at the calendars two and three years in advance because they won't create a computer camp for my kid, right? And so I absolutely am planning for 2026 and 2027. So I appreciate option B and I also appreciate the flexibility of being able to acknowledge Eid al-Fitr. Thank you.
Yes, I made this request before and I'll, I'll make it again, is that I think that because this is a really big departure and the community needs an opportunity to make comment on this, I would have this up for discussion again at least one time for review. And if, and if the the final review is just going to be the one calendar, then that's what I would have at the next meeting for discussion again. And not for adoption because this is just seems like something that the community should be able to weigh in on and and fully understand again as a departure of what's, of what's been past practice.
And just to clarify, this is on the agenda as an information item, so we're welcome.
Right, and so what I'm asking is for it to be on the agenda as an information item at the next meeting as well. So that it can be for discussion and that the public can comment and then have it voted on at the meeting after that, if necessary.
Let me ask maybe a more mundane question. What is the athletic schedule? How's that factor into the start?
So the athletic, a lot of our athletics start in the summer, so that's not.
The football schedule is going to be, it's not affect, I guess I'm thinking of the band, you know, like a lot of the auxiliary.
They're here way before we are.
That doesn't impact, they're usually here, it's usually in around tenth, eleventh, twelfth of August, sometime in around.
Yeah, they're in here.
I know they have band camp, I I'm just wondering if the athletic schedules shift or, you know.
No, they're here in the summer.
I double A establishes that independent of our calendar. One thing that Ms. Snodgrass's comments do make me recall is some of us on the board, when there was that discussion about starting before Labor Day, that was maybe one of the first topics some of us experienced that did cause, you know, some public outcry and and concern. And now it it seems maybe quaint compared to what we experienced in later global events, but that consideration for how, how families in our community plan their summers, think about the start of school probably does warrant an opportunity to hear from, from the community and the idea around, you know, the camps and how much that weighs into that week of of September.
Any other questions or comments related to the proposed calendar review?
Thank you.
My final item, Dr. Larson, is just for information purposes. Back in 2017, as an administrative team, we started trying to focus on our schools being welcoming, safe learning environments for all of our students. And about 2018, we brought a resolution before the board referred to as our Welcoming Schools Resolution. We would like to put that on the agenda on the twentieth and ask the board to recommit to that Welcoming Schools Resolution. It has resided on our website, but we would just like to bring that forward that evening.
Okay, moving on now to section four of our agenda for this evening. We have public comment for items on the agenda. This first public comment is.
This first public comment is reserved for community members to make a comment or statement about items that are on the agenda for a vote this evening. We do not have anyone signed up for this first public comment. Moving on to Section 5, Board Reports. I'll turn it over to our representative from the Delaware County Community College.
No report.
Thank you. Our representative for DCIU, Ms. Lee.
Very briefly, as the board meeting was yesterday and I was just appointed to the board, I don't have a detailed report, but I would like to give a shout out to the students of the Options Program. They were creating buttons and selling buttons all over the IU and they gave the board Eagles buttons, so definitely go Birds. If you're not familiar with the Options Programs, it's one of the fantastic programs in the IU that helps students with disabilities, students and adults transition into meaningful work skills, things that will make them employable. So I got my Eagles button and I thank them for that and I'm sure my next report will be way more detailed.
Thank you for that. Report for Legislative Council.
Yeah, just a couple of items to, relevant to AI. There was a charter school I mentioned at a board meeting from the previous meeting that AI Charter School had sought to be approved in Pennsylvania. This is where they would, AI would essentially provide instruction. And PD has declined to accept that, to approve that charter school. The second thing is Governor Shapiro presented the budget with a substantial increase in education. And the next meeting of the Legislative Council will be next week, February 12th, and I hope to bring back to the board an update on that budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Next, PSBA.
Hi, for Pennsylvania School Boards Association. On Friday, January 31st, they sent a communication to member districts and solicitors regarding recent executive action, and here is that communication. "This week, the new administration issued a series of executive actions on a wide range of matters, including diversity, equity, inclusion, immigration, federal funding, school choice, and Title IX. For instance, within a three-day span, a memo was released by the Office of Management and Budget ordering a pause on 'disbursement of all federal financial assistance'." Unquote, a stay was issued by a federal judge suspending the implementation of the memo and the memo was rescinded by OMB, highlighting just how rapidly issues are arising and changing. "PSBA staff, in conjunction with state and federal partners, including the Consortium of State School Board Associations, are analyzing the flurry of actions that have taken place over the past few days to carefully understand how any proposed changes could impact public schools in Pennsylvania and are actively developing tools, resources, and supports to ensure members are equipped to navigate the changing landscape. PSBA says it's our priority to share information that is not only timely but accurate to prevent unnecessary confusion, frustration, or concern. Please continue to watch their regular channels of communication for updates as these issues are evolving." And they further say, "As a nonpartisan membership organization, PSBA remains committed to supporting our members to lead exceptional public schools. Our focus will continue to be on ensuring that every child is provided with resources in an environment that is conducive to learning." Then another part of my update is that PSBA is a resource for school board and school board members. They regularly publish guides and publications on better practices for school boards. And recently, five new resources were released. Several of them include ones on Social Media Guide, Executive Session 101 Advocacy, and a closer look at understanding the school district budget process. I will access and download those and share those with our board members.
Thank you, Ms. Wedeman. Finance and Facilities?
The next Finance and Facilities Committee meeting is next Thursday, February 13th at 6:30. And on the agenda is an update of our ongoing construction projects at Chatham Park and the Middle School and a discussion of the plans that are developing for Cooper Town. We'll be looking at the Summer 2025 Capital Projects. The preliminary budget for 2025-26 will be presented and there'll be a discussion of the Food Services Management Review Process.
Thank you for that. Mr. Tessa, would this be the time to identify a potential volunteer for that committee or would that come later?
I input that as an information item on the Finance and Facilities Committee meeting, so I thought that would be an appropriate time to open for discussion.
Right, thank you. Okay, and then for Curriculum and People's Services, there is no update. For our policy meeting update, Ms. Snodgrass?
The next Policy Committee meeting is February 27th and it should be a packed agenda, so. See you there.
Thank you. Okay, for Board President's Report, I will open it up now to the board to share any activities. Briefly sharing activities that you've engaged in in your role as a board member since our last meeting, beyond what we all just discussed.
I have a couple of things. On Tuesday, January 28th, I attended the Lynwood Family Festival, their first ever. I understand that this was an idea from a fourth-grade student, something from a raffle idea, an opportunity for heritage activity. They shared some thinking around that and inspired teachers and the PTO to help it grow into a whole festival of cultural traditions and fun. Families and staff shared food recipes, memorabilia, there was music and dancing, outfits, language, games, maps, and all kinds of information that were shared about places that were meaningful to families in the Lynwood community. They had a great turnout and I would expect that that is the beginning of a new favorite tradition for the school. Nice to see something that started with a student idea. And then yesterday morning, I went to the Cougar Breakfast at Cooper Town. This is an offering that they have at times throughout the year for families of Cooper Town students and there's some siblings, future Coops, to come to a pancake breakfast. Chef Josh was there with the pancakes and the Cougar mascot was dancing with the students and it was nice for families to interact with each other and get a chance to talk to Principal Master Cola. Some of the topics that I was, in some discussions, were about the future renovations to Cooper Town and everyone got to hear about some upcoming events like the Science Fair and a dance that are happening.
Thank you.
Very briefly, I would just like to mention the community conversation. On January 30th, we had a very robust community conversation. We talked about things that were important to a lot of folks. Topics included transportation, P-Voss scores. It's always good when the community comes out and interacts with us directly so we can kind of hear what they're interested in, hear what's going on, and so that was a great time. Other than that, I am currently, even though I'm sitting right here, attending the Pennsylvania Department of Education Special Education Conference. I did make the trip to Hershey today because there was not a weather problem, right? So I look forward to reporting some learnings at the next board meeting.
Thank you. Any other updates on activities? Moving on now to Section 6 of our agenda for Finance and Facilities. Item A, I'll accept a motion to approve dispersments for payment totaling $930,000. That's a skill. $930,204.45.
Shelton moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Back it up. Larry's having a fit over there. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Item B, I'll accept a motion to approve the Act 34 booklet on the proposed additions and renovations to Cooper Town Elementary School.
Okay, moved.
Short second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion?
Somebody speak to the purpose of this document and its role in our consideration and approval for Cooper Town?
Based on the amount of renovations that are being done, the percent of building that's being impacted, this is just a process that PD requires us to go through to let the public know what's being done to the building, gives them the opportunity to ask questions about what's being done to the building, so just to keep that process moving. Even though there's no planned kind of reimbursement that exists any longer, this still is part of the process to keep it moving.
And Mr. Tessa, that hearing date is March 6th.
So that's on Thursday, March 6th, and that will be here in the board, in the open mind board.
Okay. Reading through the publication, I assume a lot of this is scripted or, you know, is outlined by what is required by the state. I was curious in the description that it doesn't mention how we currently operate some classrooms in modular units. And I know that was important for the board's consideration for parity in the facilities we offer across the district and for safety concerns. And when I didn't see that as a kind of a justification, a rationale for the project and the modulators weren't on the site plan for the existing facility, I was just curious, was there a reason why we wouldn't mention that as part of the project?
So that was actually, we had revised the Act 34 booklet, which we did end up uploading. So on page nine, that document refers to the existing modular classrooms. The fact that they will be removed from the school campus.
Okay. Okay, good, thank you.
One of the key factors, as you know, in the renovation was removing those and bringing these students back in.
Mm-hmm.
Page nine.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Gotcha, okay.
Motion passes. Moving on now to Item C, charitable donation. I'll accept a motion to accept the charitable donation listed below.
Okay, moved.
Shelton, second.
Any discussion?
Is there a little bit of background on this or the district chair or...
That's a scholarship fund that has been in existence for a long time.
I know the gym, the high school gym is, do I have that right? Be younger, younger. Okay, thank you.
Is it a scholarship fund for seniors applying for college or is it... Yeah, okay, thank you. Comment would just be, thank you very much for the donation.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving now to Section 7 of our agenda, Human Resources. I'll accept a motion for the following retirement and resignation as listed below.
Choice moved.
Any discussion?
Few years of service, Christine McCormick at the high school.
We're talking to her many times, calling in, we need to meet six, so yeah, pretty well.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Section B, Appointments. I'll accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including Act 168 of 2014.
Shelton moved. Short second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Letter C, I will accept a motion to approve the following leave request.
Okay, moved.
Shelton, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on now to, there's nothing for People's Services on Section 8, so moving to Section 9, Curriculum and Instruction. I will accept a motion for Letter A to approve an agreement with A.J. Giuliani to provide full-day professional development sessions and workshops on artificial intelligence and education in the amount of $7,500.
Okay, moved.
Shelton, second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Letter B, I'll accept a motion to approve the student educational excursions listed below.
Okay, moved.
Move in second.
Okay, moved in second. Any discussion?
Wish them all well.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, there's nothing listed under Section 10 Policy or Section 11 Other Items, so moving on now to Section 12, Public Comments. For other items on the agenda, this portion of public comment is reserved for comments or statements about any school-related topic that is not on the agenda for this evening. We have one person signed up to speak. If you could please come to the podium, I have John Flagler listed here. If you could state your name at the podium, confirm your residency in the township. You'll have three minutes to speak and at the end of three minutes, you'll hear a buzzer and be asked to conclude your remarks.
Hello, everybody. I'm John Flagler. Did I miss anything?
Just confirm that you're a resident of Havreford.
I'm a resident of Havreford Township here, yes. So, excuse me. I have four children in the district. One's in high school, one's in kindergarten, and the other two are making their way through. My wife and I love to travel, could have gone anywhere, and we decided to stay here in Havreford Township. We love it here. I love what the school does. I mean, K to 12, it's wonderful. The one thing that I wanted to comment on is, it's funny you brought up earlier, I was looking at the Welcoming Schools Resolution, excuse me, Resolution, and all of it's wonderful, it's detailed, really focuses on, I think, everything we need to bring compassion and empathy and understanding to the district and the students. The one concern that I have as a resident is what policy would be in place, and I'm not looking for an answer, but my concern is what policy would be in place when students kind of go against what is there, what's written about not promoting compassion, not promoting, not... When they're not promoting acceptance and respect among all students. I've heard a couple of stories of students who did not feel safe and a couple of stories of students who did not feel welcomed. And it wasn't necessarily, it was by other students in the district and it wasn't by teachers or administration. The experience that I've had so far in the middle school has been extraordinary. I just, I couldn't have a better experience with my child and with the administration in the middle school. They were just so wonderful. But when sometimes those comments from other students may be overlooked by people and that's my concern is when students don't feel safe, is how do we, when they break the policy, what would be a consequence of that? And I know you can't tell anybody what, you know, consequences are for individual students, but what's the policy for not creating like a safe place? And how, a little bit more maybe examples of how teachers would be kind of promoting that in the classroom. So that's all I have. I guess I'm out of time, so, all right, thanks.
Thank you. We do not have anyone else sign up for public comment in the second portion of the public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to... And similar to Mr. Flagler, if you could state your name, please, and confirm your residency in the township. You'll have three minutes.
Certainly. Todd Hall. I reside in Havreford Township. I'm here tonight to discuss the school calendar. Although the addition of any days off with a connection to a religious holiday is not on the proposed calendar so far, it's been discussed in recent board committee meetings for future calendar considerations. it's been discussed in recent board committee meetings for future calendar considerations. It was stated by the board president at the committee meeting, at some point, we are going to be intentional recognizing this holiday to allow our students to celebrate. Let's take a step back here. Is the school district being intentional with recognizing other religious holidays? We have winter break, not Christmas break or Hanukkah break. Religious holidays currently are being recognized in our schools, in our elementary schools. There are no holiday programs that explain and recognize the various holidays. There were back in '83. I'm not Jewish, but I enjoyed being a menorah candle. Are students currently allowed to celebrate the proposed additional religious holiday? Absolutely. An absence from school for a religious holiday is an excused absence. As I mentioned in the prior meeting, any public school district calendar operates without regard to celebrating or recognizing religion. Schools' calendars schedule days off for reasons that it was said this evening, for when there would be days that it would be apparent that many students would be absent if school were in session. In the discussion of the holiday at the last committee meeting, there was a discussion about other districts. When we think about looking at other districts, we can look at today, for example. Our school prudently decided it was acceptable to have school in 35 to 40-degree rainy weather. Others did not. We also talked about absence numbers of the proposed holiday. A board member wisely alluded to the fact that the number of students absent that day should be compared to the number of students absent on any day. The number of students is growing in enrollment. Logically, the number of students absent would be growing according with that. There were some more numbers mentioned this evening and I would, I guess, look for clarity in a future follow-up as to if those were days for religious exemptions specifically being requested or if those were numbers in those days of just absences on that date. One thing we didn't hear in the meeting was news of any requests from people who observed this holiday asking for the day off. And then finally, we can't forget, and another item not discussed, is that the district's students and faculty would like as long as a summer break as possible. If we were to add holidays, we'd be closer to the end date of the school in or close to July and the end date would possibly, again, possibly, there were some good solutions mentioned this evening as far as in-service days, but it would have to be after Juneteenth. If we were to add more holidays, we should rotate which religious holidays are off each year possibly, even if school would be in session on a federal holiday such as Christmas as a way to accommodate this. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Okay, seeing none. Moving on now to Section 13 of our agenda, Item A, Report on Executive Session. The board met before tonight's meeting to discuss with council agency business that if discussed in public would violate a lawful privilege or lead to the disclosure of information protected by law. Section 14, our next public board, next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on February 20th, 2025 at 7:30 PM here in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administrative Building. Okay, and with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn. Somebody's like, say?
Second.